We'll just keep going.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town clerk will now read the notice.
A notice of public hearing for April 20th, 2022 at 6:25 PM postponed from April 12th, 2022 to hear public input on proposed local law number two of 2022, sexual harassment local law for the town of Clinton. Public hearing will be held at 6:25 PM at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, Town of Clinton. At 6:25 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning the proposed local law number two entitled Local Law Establishing a Sexual Harassment Policy pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law. This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the town clerk's office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on the said proposal at the date, time, and place of course said.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. We have a sexual harassment prevention policy in place in our employee handbook, but in October of 2018, New York State required employers to adopt a sexual harassment prevention policy and training that meets or exceeds the state's minimum standards. Our current policy did not do that. And in discussion with the town attorney, it was decided that any policy mandated by the state should be in the town code as opposed to the employee handbook, and adopting this is what it will do. If anybody has any comments on a sexual harassment prevention policy, come on up. Otherwise, we'll start the regular meeting in a couple of minutes.
Yes.
All right, seeing no comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Have a second?
Seconds.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Yeah. 6:29. Okay, at 6:30, I would like to call the regular town board meeting of April 20th to order. May please stand and pledge to flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the town board meeting held on March 8th, 2022. Does there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the special town board meeting held on March 28th, 2022. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the special town board meeting held on April 6th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Okay, I have a feeling people are here for public discussion, so I'm going to make a motion to open the meeting to public discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I am going to start by reading several emails that we've received, and then I'll open it up to the floor. From Jeff Brandsberg, Oak Tree Road, "I understand the library lease will be discussed Wednesday. From what I've read, the library was built with donated funds and then donated to the town, so the initial cost to the town was minimal. Town resident financial support for the library was further demonstrated in 2017 when voters overwhelmingly passed a referendum to provide a stable source of funding. Direct financial support from the taxpayers based on property assessments and has since been able to expand programming to the benefit of all, including sponsoring collaborative events with other local organizations, including the Clinton Historical Society. This demonstrates the value of the library as an integral part of life in our town and deserves our support. Please continue the existing lease at $1 per year." I then have two emails, one from Judy Cannon and one from Lori Murphy, that are almost identical, so I imagine they collaborated on this, so I will read one of them. "I am contacting you by email in support of our community library as I cannot attend your meeting on Wednesday evening, April 20th. I understand there is a proposal to replace the current $1 annual library lease with a monthly rent of $150. It is not clear to me why this has been proposed. In 2017, I joined a strong majority of Clinton voters to adopt a 414 referendum to provide stable funding for the library. This has allowed the library to expand their programming and become a highly valued community service, possibly the highest value. I do not see how charging monthly rent will make a meaningful impact on the town budget, and it seems to be contrary to the desires of the voters who passed the 414 referendum. I would like to see a long-term extension of the $1 annual lease. Thank you for your consideration." I then also received two emails via email before the meeting tonight. One is Pat Keaton and Peter Schechner on Longview Road. "Unfortunately, we cannot make it to the town meeting tonight, but Peter and I wanted to voice our very strong support for the Clinton Library. The library should not be required to pay a monthly rent; rather, it should be mandated to use its funds for books and activities to serve as many people in the community as possible. It's an essential resource for families, and few institutions serve as wide a constituency of all ages as the library. It is a crucial resource. Teresa McGurk, former director and I are walking buddies, and I know what a vital role the library has played for the whole community in terms of offering many activities as well as books. I've used it and taken my grandchildren there and look forward to continuing to do so in the future, including this summer. If there are additional ways we can show our support more formally, please let us know." And then the final email was, give me a moment, from Donna Miller on Old Bull's Head, I believe. "It has come to my attention that the town board is considering charging the Clinton Community Library a monthly rental for space used in the Town Hall complex. I would like to voice my opinion that this is a poor way for the town to increase annual income and does not reflect compensation for what the library offers town residents. I would ask that the board table this discussion and seek the opinions of town residents prior to making a decision. I am voicing my opinion at this time to indicate that the town board should not encumber the library with this additional expense." So now the floor is open for anyone who'd like to get up and speak. Please say your name, where you live, and try to limit it to about three minutes, if you can.
My name is Pat Cortese, Seven Willow Lane. Hi. I guess I could just say ditto for the emails. I'm here also to say that my opinion is we should absolutely not charge, start charging the library rent. I think it's been 45 years that we've had a lease with the town and never charged rent, so I also agree, I don't think it's a good time to start. Catherine, you and I have been on the library board together for years and before you were director, so I think you know that 12 months of rent, $1,600 a year can buy a lot of programs and books for children, adults, and everybody else that we serve in the community. Let's see. I was just going to say that we're very, very lucky to have this asset in our community and that the staff is always so terrific, friendly, and helpful. We're just so lucky that I think we should be doing everything we possibly can to support the library and not start charging rent. I'm sure you all got your newsletter. I mean, 14,000 people visited the library in 2021. I won't, of course, go through all the programs, but it's amazing, all the programs for teens, adults, children. So, that's my opinion. Absolutely not start charging rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Hi, I'm Mary Pat Sternberg, Gristle Place, Salt Point. I'm here as the president of the Board of Trustees of the Clinton Community Library and would like to share our thoughts. As you are aware, in May of 1975, the town of Clinton entered into a lease agreement with the Clinton Community Library. The lease had an initial period of 25 years at $1 per year and provided an option for the library to renew the agreement for three additional 10-year periods at the same rate. This agreement was renewed in 2000 and 2010. In January 2020, our library director, Carol Bancroft, sent a letter to then-town supervisor Ray Oberly exercising our right to the third and final 10-year period at the same dollar rate. Since that time, each April, including this month, the library has paid the agreed-upon rate. Supervisor Witten has recently received a letter again stating that the library is exercising its option for the final 10-year period. We look forward to continuing to meet our mission of providing the community materials, resources, programs, and learning. We look forward to your support of the library, as each of you verbally expressed, and now please show it by renewing our final lease extension. Thank you, and thank you to the people who have reached out to you to share their feelings about the library.
Thank you, Mayor Burt.
I'm Teresa McGurk from Forestory Lane. I'm a resident, former library board of trustee, and former director of the library. And I to ask you to continue the original agreement for rent at $1 a year. Eight years ago, the library went through a huge transformation because of the support and the donations of the community. And through that revitalization, we've conducted, the library has conducted itself in full efforts to cooperate and to be stewards of this building. I don't understand where this arbitrary number comes as charging rent, because the fact that we've been in the building creates an atmosphere for the security and maintaining functioning facilities in the building. Can't tell you how many times we were in here and the bathrooms don't work or there's a problem with the building in some way. We created a space downstairs that is now viable, usable space through donations and volunteer hours from the community. Four years ago, through, again, through an annual appeal from the community, donations were used to change, replace the carpet and paint, repaint the space in the library. If it's from a sense of we need the library to pay something, you have those tables over there, we have a new sound system, we have a wireless microphone that has been generated from the need to provide good programming to the whole of the community. And I just have a sense that the relationship that the library has had with the town would change if you go into a tenant-type relationship. So I urge you, as you did in 2010, support the $1 a year rent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more?
My name is Marian Thompson, Hollow Road. I'm also a former trustee of the library. I was president years ago, back in the 90s. And it's amazing how much has happened since then, how many more programs. When I was president, we were just a community reading site. We were not a library. We became a library, and then we got on the tax rolls. And since then, there's just been amazing programs that never existed before. The Lunch and Learn, the Chair Yoga, the Tai Chi, the Kids Camp, which is wonderful down at the rec park. So many things have enriched this community, and I know that people are grateful for it. I used to do, I haven't been doing the yoga for a while, but I enjoyed going to the yoga. And I know a lot of people that liked the course that have always loved Story Hour. So it's not just a library, and libraries are not just libraries anymore. They're real community centers, and they give so much. For people who don't have computers, they can come here, do their homework, or do a job search. For people who are just hungry for new books, you know, the library is a wonderful, it's a wonderful resource. And we do have to keep buying new books to stay abreast of what the community wants. I also don't understand why, was there a reason given that we should start paying $150 a month?
Were you asking a question?
Yes, I am.
So, all right, if you're asking, then, first of all, it's not rent. Okay, that's the first thing that I would like to say. It was never proposed as rent, at least when I'd been on the board. The utilities, it's, I did some research, and a few of us have done some research with other libraries. The lease, I'm 100% on board with the dollar a year continuing that on, and I'd like to extend it for 25 years is where I'd like to be. But with the cost of utilities and stuff like that, most libraries pay their own utilities out of it. We're in a unique situation, because when these buildings were built, nothing is separated, right? So for the years that the town kind of absorbed it, with inflation and everything else, like I just went through and I signed vouchers, and I'll use this as an example to explain to you. Here's the numbers, I wasn't going to say until later on, but just to make everyone, so they understand, it's not rent, it's not supposed to be towards rent. Excuse me one second.
Is this something that we can discuss during the motion later?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we'll talk about what the, you know, what the Central Hudson bills are on this building alone over the past two months, which is, $150 is a small number on it. It's not to go after paying the 414, not to take money back or anything else. The town overwhelmingly, and I supported the 414, you know, several, you know, a few years ago and voted for it, you know, the library talked about possibly going up later on and do another one to offset it. The concern is, I'm just saying, it's not for rent. It's more a little, a good faith gesture for 25 years, lock-in, to help the utilities, especially with the inflation that everyone else is seeing in their own personal bills. That's where it was. I just, so that's where it came from.
I don't know if you're aware, but for many years, Clinton was the lowest-funded library in the county.
I know.
Even though we're not a poor town, we have a decent income in this town, and it really didn't make sense that we were the lowest-funded. And I suspect that we couldn't have great bragging rights about how we're funded now compared to the rest of the libraries in the county. I think we have to keep up our standards of supporting the library as a free service and as something that is a gift to the community and is something that they pay taxes for, too. They do pay taxes for the library. So, anyway, that's my piece, and I hope you all vote in favor of the community and the library.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, Rich Morse from Hollow Road. It's a library where a freestanding entity, and they had to plow their own driveway and whatnot. It would be very expensive. But yet, if the town didn't drive their truck in front of the library, how much would they be saving? It's really kind of hard to separate out these numbers. I think if the true issue is the cost of the lights at the library, let's put a meter, let's separate the electric and get a meter out there. We can do that, that's not a big deal. But I think the bigger thing is that we're all trying to support the library, and in good faith, I would love to see a long-term lease, keep it, okay, if we backed ourselves into a corner and we have to raise it, make the raise as small as possible. We're trying to support the library, so let's come together, do a long-term lease, and keep it low. And as you say, it's not a lease, but it is. So let's just keep it as low as possible and as long-term, so the library has a good footing to stand on so they can work their budget. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah? Well, did you want to speak?
Yeah, sure.
Come on in.
Hi, I'm Richard Marshall. Sorry for being late. It may be what I'm going to say is merely repetitive, but if I'm correct in saying this, that the proposed lease has an at-will revocation, I do oppose that. As I think the gentleman pointed out before me, that's not a lease, it's a license, and it doesn't seem at all consistent with what the original donor or donors whose money built the library would have intended. That's not to say a lease can't be terminated for cause, but not at will. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Anyone else? All right, seeing no other comments, I make a motion to return to regular order of business.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to supervisors' comments. Town Clerk Carol Mackin, along with Dutchess County SPCA, is hosting a free rabies clinic on Saturday, April 23rd, from 8:00 AM to noon at the Town Hall. Pre-registration is required. You can register online at dcspca.org or call 845-452-7722, extension 425. Proof of residency is required. It's $10 per pet for non-residents. Town Clerk Carol Mackin will be available to issue dog licenses for Clinton residents and will be accepting donations to the SPCA of pet food, pet supplies, and cleaning supplies. You can see that list at the SPCA website. This coming Monday, April 25th, the Highway Department will be making an emergency culvert repair on Shadlo Lane, starting first thing in the morning. Shadlo will be closed between Longview and Nine Partners Road. The closure is expected to last one day. A culvert pipe is undermining the integrity of the road and must be replaced immediately. Our Highway Department is able to execute this repair entirely with the use of our own equipment, which will save the town the rental cost of nearly $2,500. The New York State burn ban remains in effect through May 14th. Open burning is a single greatest cause of wildfires in New York State, and since the spring burn ban was implemented in 2009, the number of wildfires has decreased by more than 40%. Finally, we have a vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals that the town is looking to fill. The purpose of the ZBA is to ensure equitable administration of the town's zoning code. The ZBA has the authority to review decisions of the town zoning administrator, the building inspector, and building inspector. The ZBA hears appeals and evaluates requests for interpretations of the zoning law and approves or denies area and use verances. They meet on the fourth Thursday of the month. If you are interested in joining the ZBA, please send a letter of interest and resume to me at townsupervisor@townofclinton.com, or you can drop it off during business hours at my office in the Schoolhouse Building. All letters and resumes should be received by end of business on Friday, April 30th. Moving on to town board reports, we do it in whatever order I feel, so.
Elliot. Okay, well, actually, just a couple of quick comments about the Planning Board. There have been three meetings, the Planning Board since our last meeting because of our one-week rescheduling. Some fairly major developments there. We've had a number of, pleased to report, a number of people applying for operating permits for short-term rentals. There were three of them, I believe, that came in during that period of time. We also had our first application for an agricultural event center. That will be a groundbreaker for us, since we haven't had any since the law was passed, what was it, two years ago when the law was passed? So that's a major development, and there were also a couple of, I'd say, fairly lively public hearings, one of which was in this room last night with the applicant from Cornerstone coming in to request a special use permit to increase their population. It was a very well-attended meeting, lasted for about better part of two hours, I suspect. There will be another meeting for the Cornerstone if anybody has any comments or was not able to make it last night, two weeks from yesterday, and it will be here. ZBA had a meeting, theirs was fairly straightforward. There was a variance on the agenda, which was approved, and an extensive board discussion having to do with the solar panel law, which was passed, what was it, three years ago, in the solar, three, four years ago, on the solar panel law. And ZBA is deciding as a group whether they want to come in with a request that we revisit that law and consider some changes to it. Anyway, so that's it for the Planning Board and the Zoning Board.
Catherine?
I have a couple of things that I wanted to talk about from the library. First, is there a few trustee positions open? They are three-year terms, and there are applications in the library, so if you're interested, stop by and see anybody, I'm sure the library can help you with that. They are showing an Earth Day movie, the 22nd of April, which is Friday, at 5:30, and they are still accepting book donations, and there will be a book sale the end of May. I would encourage you, however, to check their website before you drop anything off, because there are some things that they don't wish to take, so save them the trouble of throwing those things out. But they are looking for donations. And then, last but not least, there is a shredding truck coming on the 23rd of April, so you can also look for that for the times on their website. And then for Highway, I only have one little thing, because you talked about the road closures.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all good, as long as it got mentioned. The Highway Department asks that you please keep your driveway culvert pipes clean and clear, so that there's no flooding in the roads.
Chris?
The big thing, I was not at the last rec meeting, but I understand that while we're on, doing, planning for our community day this year, we've got a lot of different activities. Check on the website, the different type of activities you can do and stuff, so that's good for that. I am pleased to say, finally, we have Wi-Fi, the first phase of our Wi-Fi, set up in our park, which we're, the next phase, we're going to get mesh network system and put some cameras up there, but, so, we should be able to have Wi-Fi calling anyone who's using it at that point, because phone service is at a limited down air. So definitely check the website and check out any of the clubs that are going to be coming out and get involved.
I feel like I'm in ping pong or tennis or something like that. Anyway, the only thing I wanted to report on is, obviously, tonight is typically our zoning revision meeting. We're getting down to the knitting-gritty of our definitions, so if anybody has any input in definitions, please come out. Our next meeting will be May 4th at 6:30.
May the Fourth be with us.
Let me throw out one more thing, I'm sorry, on the scenic roads. We had our annual spring cleanup on Saturday, and it was a successful event, from what I understand. I have a comment here from Rick McLaughlin, who is the chair of the Scenic Roads Committee, which I'd like to read out for public consumption. There was a good turnout, especially given the fact that it was Passover, Easter, and raining. So there you go. An increase in the number of participants from last year. 12 people signed in and received seat packets. Rick himself, the chair, drove around after the meeting, picking up trash and garbage bags that had been left in various roads by participants who could not make it to the Town Hall. Nancy Kous, who is on the committee, and Bonnie Fulmer handled most of the work at the actual dumpster itself, and additional trash was picked up and added to the dumpster late yesterday, which would have been Sunday, because this was written on Monday, late yesterday. People had time and walked off their Easter dinner. So, those are comments from the chair of the Scenic Roads Committee.
Okay, old business, we're going to talk about ARPA. Sorry, nobody, not everybody can see this, but it's our little spreadsheet of how we're spending our ARPA funds. You'll notice I've, since last month, I've added yellow highlights. Those are things that have changed since our last meeting, so I'll just go through that quick. The top one, the laser fish scanning, we have had a second meeting with the person that organizes the scanning to maybe alter some of the things that are being scanned. We expect it to lower the price from that $58,000 on there, and then we will use some of that savings to hire them to actually come and do all the packing up for us, because as of now, this $58,000 in scanning requires our own employees to spend countless hours boxing up all these things for the scanning company. And as we know, we have pretty much just the amount, the amount of employees that we need to operate the town at this point, and asking them to do more is going to be really difficult. So hopefully we can.
That's included in their price.
Yeah, so what will happen is, is there are a lot of things that were in the original proposal that we didn't think needed to be scanned, primarily the giant maps that almost no one ever accesses once something gets their permit. So we're not going to scan those things, and that will save us probably in the realm of $20,000, and then we'll spend maybe $4,000 or $5,000 using their service to box everything up for us.
Nice.
So.
Nice.
The other thing that was changed, I just wanted you to point out that the network switches and the install of them did occur. and the price is lower than what we had approved by about $2,000. Turns out, what we had approved was stuck on a container ship somewhere, and the network switch started to fail, and it needed to be replaced right away. We had approved the funding, so we found another network switch that would work, that was not on a container ship somewhere, and it was less money. The television studio, we approved option two at the last meeting. I have started to receive the quotes for all of the equipment to make sure it will fall within what we approved, the about $25,000 there. And then, moving forward, the Masonic Hall is on the agenda tonight, but we put aside $30,000 in a reserve fund over the last two years for the repainting of the Masonic Hall. We've gotten quotes with the bids coming in, and it's coming in at about $48,000, $49,000. So we were going to use the $30,000 that we have in the reserve fund, and then hopefully tonight approve the other $18,640 in ARPA funds. And then, well, on the agenda, and the reports that we were just talking about, culvert pipes. I just added that. That wasn't in the last, the last spreadsheet we had, but it was something we had discussed at budget time, having $6,000 for culvert pipes being spent out of ARPA funds, so I wanted to add it. And Chris, you probably have an update, while you gave us the update on Fred and Mark.
Yeah, so with the, going to the mesh network and the cameras, we originally have a budget that we figured $10,000. Now that we got Phase 1 done, I'm going to be setting up a meeting with Fred, our IT guy. I believe we can be well underneath that number as well for doing the mesh and the cameras for that park. Friends Park is still on hold right now. We're just trying to get the funding, or trying to extend for our grant that we have. So we're trying to get, with all the costs of inflation, you know, we're trying to get the fence on the ball field, as well as the ADA, the bathrooms handicap accessible. From what I understand from talking with you, Mike, that it's looking good with Pete, you know, for getting extension and trying to...
We had a grant from the county to do all this work at Friends Park, and then that was before all of the inflation, and replacing the fence is now going to cost us quite a bit more than what was anticipated. So we've asked the county to extend the deadline on the grant, and maybe we can renegotiate and see if they'll cover more of it, and if not, we're going to try and cover the excess with ARPA or with the subdivision fund.
Yeah, and our subdivision fund.
Can we do that this year, or would this be for next year?
We're trying to still do it.
We're trying to still do it this year, but we're basically just waiting on the county's attorneys to approve it all for us, so if they take too long, it may be too late for us to get bids to have it done this year.
Several people have asked me.
Yeah. The fence at that park has been there from the beginning. It's 50 years old. And it's kind of dangerous at this point. I also would like to just quick thank Chris. He used his own personal employees for free, donated them to the town to dig a trench and help...
Well, part of the trench was done, I gotta, I gotta give our Highway Department, everyone over at our Highway Department that helped and was part of doing the trenching, and I had a couple of my guys come and work with them, and we ran the lines, and we ran the cable and so forth. So it was a group effort, it was a nice group effort from our Highway Department and a few of my guys.
So that's it for ARPA. If anybody had any other things to talk about on it?
Nope.
Looks good.
All right, Masonic Hall painting. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approve the contract with Robert Hollingsworth for the painting of the Masonic Hall at a cost not to exceed $48,640, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the town supervisor to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, the capital, as we mentioned, the Capital Reserve Fund has $30,000 for this, and the next motion would be to approve ARPA funds if this one passes.
Presumably, this is materials, I guess, right, the added expense?
Yeah, the added expense, and also the, he, Bob Hollingsworth painted the schoolhouse last time for us, but it was just him. The nature of the Masonic Hall, he's taking on an employee on this as well.
He's got prevailing wage.
So there's prevailing wage, which he paid more than that anyway, but we've been working on this for several years, so I'm really excited to get this project done.
And ultimately, if we don't, again, it goes to the maintenance. You know, we don't take care of the paint, the wood, and get it painted and everything else, it's going to be costing more as we keep kicking it down the field, so we really need to keep up on the buildings.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approve spending $18,640 in ARPA funds to supplement the Masonic Hall Painting Capital Reserve Fund to pay for the project. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved, revol, excuse me. Be it resolved that the town board approves Resolution Number 19 of 2022, hereby adopting Local Law Number 2 of 2022, entitling local law establishing sexual harassment policy, a copy of which is attached here too and made a part of this resolution, and be it further resolved that the town clerk directed to enter this local law in the minutes of the meeting and give notice, do notice to the adoption of this local law to the Secretary of State of New York.
Second.
Any discussion? This is what the public hearing was about earlier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approve going out to bid for the library ramp project using BidNet. The bids will be received by May 31st, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. by Town Clerk Carol Mackin, 1215 Center Road, Randbeck, New York, 12572, and opened as soon thereafter. Is there a second?
Second.
So the library ramp, this is another project that's been in the works for about four years. The town received a DASNY grant, that's a Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, through Diddy Barrett's office, to install this ramp and replace the roof on the old highway garage. The roof was replaced at the end of 2021, and we still have about $90,000 in remaining funds to install the ramp. The plans now will be that the ramp will connect from the staircase out here in front and across to the library, so everybody using the ramp can park in the handicap spots between this building and the schoolhouse and use the ramp to go across. And there will be an automatic door installed at the library as well. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approve Resolution Number 20 of 2022, the free schedule dated April 12th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
This changes the tax collector's second notice fee from $5 to $2. By state law, we have to, we can only charge $2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Library lease. It's not in the script. I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board authorize the supervisor to sign the extension agreement between the Town of Clinton and Clinton Community Library for a 10-year period beginning May 14th, 2020, and ending May 13th, 2030. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So, this very same motion was made in April 2010. In fact, I got the, I wrote this resolution by copying and pasting it from Town Board minutes of April 2010. It exercises the library's previous extension. It passed unanimously that night, and according to the minutes of that meeting, Councilman Venezia said that this was proof that the town, of the town's long-term support of the library. As I mentioned, the resolution passed unanimously, meaning that Councilman Michael voted in favor of it, and the resolution authorized the town supervisor to sign the lease extension. The other signature on the extension was that of the library director, which at that time was Catherine Mostello, Councilwoman Mostello. The Library Board of Trustees met on April 11th. The next morning, I was informed that they voted to exercise the final 10-year extension of their current lease agreement with the town, which only has about eight years left on it. I've discussed this scenario with the town attorney, not knowing if we could do this at this late date. Their current agreement states that they can exercise their final extension by sending a letter to the town board within 180 days of the expiration of the lease. This letter was sent to the town board on January 14th, 2020, a copy of which I have here for you. And it was within the 180-day window. Subsequent to that letter, the Board of Trustees informed us that they wanted to update the language, this was the letter in 2020, that they wanted to update the language of number six in their lease. That was what Mr. Marshall referred to earlier as the "at-will revocation." At that meeting, that basically would allow the town to evict the library within 100 days, with 180 days' notice. That provision didn't indicate any cause would be needed for eviction, so Councilman Michael and myself met with representatives of the library board and came up with language that was acceptable to all of us, and the town attorney approved it. So that language in the lease is changed. So it would be for structural issues or safety issues that they could be asked to leave within 180 days. But out of that meeting came the suggestion from Mr. Michael that the library begin to pay rent and/or utilities. The library countered by asking for a 100-year lease in exchange for the payments, and the town and library have been at a stalemate ever since. So with the intention of breaking the stalemate, the library has now proposed moving forward with their final 10-year extension, the only change to the lease being that item number six, which is the "at-will revocation" that we all agreed to. Town Attorney Shane Egan, I checked with him to make sure this was allowable, and he has told me, quote, "In my opinion, since the library exercised their option timely, you can forget the utility payments and 100-year lease at the length of the lease aspects of this, and enter into a modified lease extension with the terms of number six modified." If this approach is agreeable to the library and town board, I don't see any impediment to extending the lease on these terms. The extension would run 10 years, starting with 2020. And if we agree to it, he will draft an extension for our review, and we can approve it next month. I would like to get a sense of the town board this evening to determine if we can move forward with this and have Shane draft the agreement for next month's meeting. Per the town attorney, if the town board decides not to move forward with this request, the library is entitled to continue to pay the town $1 per year on April 1st, as they did 20 days ago. They are established as a holdover tenant with a periodic tenancy of one year. If we do not accept the extension agreement, in my opinion, we only have three options left. One would be to allow this to continue indefinitely on the periodic tenancy. The second option is the town and library can come to an agreement on a new lease. And number three would be to evict the library. Those are my comments. I'm sure you all have your own.
The periodic tenancy would last for eight years.
So if we do not agree to the 10-year extension, which lasts another eight years, they can continue to pay $1 a year every April for as long...
Yeah, it's not, it wouldn't be the eight years, it would be until an agreement is reached.
But they would only have a one-year tenancy each time.
Got it.
You know, the whole conversation started in the fact that the library was looking for a longer term so that they could apply for better grants, and that some of the grants required more than a 10-year lease. And I think we've all gone through two years of good faith in going through, and Michael, I know that you worked on trying to separate the utility bills. I know that Catherine actually came up with some computations on her own, and I think Chris made some computations himself. And I even said that all you have to do is call the Central Hudson, and they'll give you an estimated what a 3,000-square-foot space would cost to operate. You know, when we did the 414 was done, what was really being done was the separation of the library's funding from the town, where the town would be granting whatever the amount was, I think the last number was $55,000, but in addition to the $55,000 was all the utilities and everything else on top of that. And we had this discussion before the 414, which I was a party of, in which every time that the library says, "Well, we're only getting $55,000," it was brought up that there was much more than $55,000 included in that, in that number because of all the other services. When the 414 separated the library's budget from the town's budget, it would be no different than our budget being separated from the highway budget. All this is doing is saying that whatever entity has to categorize their expenses under their category. And so when we started the conversation, saying, "Okay, now that the 414 has separated your budget, you now really should be budgeting for the expense of those items that the town has been picking up, and put it under your library code." And that's really all the extent. It wasn't a matter of increasing a lease from a dollar, which keeps on getting thrown out there, and I think that's disingenuous. It's a matter of basically separating the utilities, and I had expressed a much higher number than, I think the number really came from Chris, at $150. To say that someone would pay $150 or $1,800 a year for the utilities for the next 20 years, 25, with the fact of we're seeing Central Hudson raising their rates quite a bit, I think is a really good deal. So I believe that, you know, the library is now playing a game, and I don't find it to be fair. So I don't see why, you know, $1,800 a year for separating utilities is such a big deal, but, you know, it's just my opinion.
My only response to that is, we're in year 47 of a 55-year agreement, and...
The 414 separated that agreement.
The 414 had nothing to do with the lease that they were operating under. And we're in year 47 of that 55-year agreement, and we're trying to change the rules on them now.
I think the 414 changed the rules.
So we have a motion on the floor. Does anybody else have any comments?
I do, I do want to say that I want to make it clear that we are all supporters of the library. And somebody, I think Pat, was kind enough to point out that I was director of this library. It is near and dear to my heart. What, the way I'm thinking of it is that the townspeople, and thank you all for coming, but there's a lot more people that are in this town, and they voted to support the library in the 414, and they voted to give you $115,000, well-deserved, and you make the most of that money. But that's what they decided to support it at. And I think a case can be made that we are giving you more than that, and the taxpayers, now that you've got a 414, are the ones that are deciding how much money you get. So that's the way I look at it, that we are, by supporting the library, and we're still going to support you. I mean, you know, the roads get plowed, and the steps get cleaned off, and all those things. And we're only asking for some support from you guys, but that it's the taxpayers' decision, that we are stewards of the taxpayers' money, and they've told us how much they want us to spend, of their money, they want to be spent on the library. And it is not our business to change it.
So when 2/3 of the voters did approve the 414, they did that under the understanding that the library was paying $1 a year in rent, not $1,800 a year in rent.
Catherine, I'll let you finish.
No, I, I would like to say, I wonder how many people actually knew that, but that's not really the point. The only thing I think you, the only thing of merit right now is that there was an agreement for 55 years that this could go.
And that was for the dollar-a-year lease.
Yeah.
And which, again, that, I guess that's the thing that, you know, first of all, I commend every, anytime, I'm a big proponent of having, I wish people would show up to every meeting like this, right? Even if we disagree or have a disagreement, I think it's a great day for our town, because that's how we can have open conversations for. It was for a dollar-a-year lease. So what I did, I pulled up, and I know Catherine's trying to figure square footage and stuff like this.
I did.
And Rich, when Rich was talking today, he said, "Well, you can separate, separate it out." And then, you know, Dean's right, we get a number from what heat and electric, you know, would cost, it'd be a far more, farther cost on there. So what I did, I pulled the last two months of electric for this building, this part of our building, which includes library, the functions that we use here in the town, and the cords. So February, the cost of electric alone was $634 and change, and for March, it was $1,225. Now, we all are suffering, you know, in our local...
I think March was a combined two months, because there was a...
No, I pulled, I pulled...
I know, I know you saw the bill.
No, I went right by the dates on there.
I know, you saw the bill. When we paid the $623 that one month, it hadn't registered with Central Hudson by the time we got the second bill.
So, but I can, so...
So it's about $600 a month.
I did the same thing in a different way. I took three, three months of past electric bills, and I got the total square footage of all the town buildings. I deducted the ones that have no heat. I found out from Shane how many square feet the library uses of all the buildings. I did all the math, I checked all the math, and it comes out to about $142 a month that, if you go by square footage. And, you know, nothing is perfect.
That's, that's electric.
This included pandemic times, you know, so...
Catherine, now that's electric out of that, right? So we're not, we're not taking into the account of heat, because that's, we got geothermal, and there's other things here. So, I mean, there's other variables that kind of play into that and the maintenance of that, so...
But that was the only thing that you could really carve out easily to make...
I mean, any...
And then we're talking about locking it in for the next 25 years.
Guaranteeing that.
It's not changing.
This motion is just talking about locking in their, the end of their last eight years on the 55-year lease.
But that goes into the, into the play.
And that goes into the, I say that, you know, the 414 separated the budget, and we're not changing the dollar lease, I'm fine with the dollar lease. It's the fact that the utility proportion should be separated... It's the fact that the utility proportion should be separated as well.
I don't...
But the alternative, the alternative is to continue year to year forever. That seems to be the alternative.
That seems to be what we've been doing for the last two years.
Based on what the attorney says, right?
You know, unfortunately, the library is at a disadvantage because then they can't apply for grants.
My concern is that Shane said that this is legal to continue and that I, I believe that the library should contribute for the, we'll say, electric for sake of the argument, utilities that they use. But if this is a prior agreement of 55 years and Shane is saying that this is, then I'm concerned about the legality.
We have the right to vote, we have a right, they have to agree to it, and once they put in the letter, we still have the right to agree to that as well, where it goes year until we come up with a solution.
Yeah, let's be clear on the process. So they put in the letter to exercise their last 10-year extension.
Right, I got it.
It's up to us to approve that. If we do not approve it, then they are currently, then they would be without a lease. Shane says it is legal for them to then go year to year under the same conditions of the previous lease that they were under until we come to an agreement on the lease. And that would be why they paid us $1 on April 1st.
Right. However, in the very beginning, they were given an option of 55 years, correct?
It was a 25-year lease and three 10-year extensions.
I'm sorry, three 10-year.
Right, that's my concern, that that was the agreement, that there's the 10, that we are still within that last 10-year extension.
But, but the way it's put in there is we have to be able to approve it. So you're not, we're, we can say, based on this change, you know, it was for a dollar a year, and I do agree with Dean, the fact, you know, when this 414 changed it. And listen, I want to be honest with you. I had a couple of conversations with Justin Carroll on this issue where, you know, he says, well, if I had to figure it out, and I understand other, basically, other libraries pay certain utilities and so forth when we spoke, he says, well, I would have to just figure it out in the budget as the treasurer. And, you know, he asked me, he said, in a meeting that we had, a Zoom meeting, we all were separate in different meetings with the library trustees and so forth. And one of the things that came up, and I think it came up with you guys before my meeting, was if we were to defer it for one year on that. And, and I says, you know, I says, that's interesting. He goes, he says, well, I really haven't discussed that with the rest of the library board. And I says, you know, I could potentially get behind that, you know, for, you know, deferring it for one year, which start, so it's not starting this year, so they get it under their belt. And then he was, they were talking about doing another 414 and put it to the voters at that point, which I'm 100% for. You let the voters decide. I think it'll pass, I'm not gonna, I think the support's there. But the 414, the library on top of the 414 gets the lease, and that's the part of it for the time, for a dollar. So what the town gives is more than what the original 414 was originally allotted for. So if you look at, we're not taking, giving them money and taking money back. The lease, if we had another tenant in there, which we don't want, none of us want that, and I want to see a 25-year lease, I don't want to see a 10-year, I want to see a 25-year lease to guarantee that they have the tools to get the funding for their grants and everything else they need. But the truth of the matter is, the utilities are going up. If it was separated off the, if we had it separated, they would have been paying, they would have to figure out the budget inside to hand for it. We're locking them in for $150 for 25 years. If I could do that on my own home, I would give one finger.
Did somebody build your home with donations and then give it to you?
But we, but the town does, on all the other stuff that we do, as even Rich said, you know, a few people said, we do shovel the walk, because we're here. But that is labor, at the end of the day, that's extra labor that we do figure in our budget that has to come out of somewhere.
And we've also doubled the space, which I approved.
Yeah.
We doubled the space.
The library isn't agreeing to the 25-year lease, so that unfortunately, it's, the point is moot. And I knew Betty Davis, who, who made all that happen.
Yeah.
In my opinion, Betty Davis would say, you need to pull your weight.
Oh, let's not put words in people's mouth that aren't...
No, that's just...
Catherine, I'd like, I just want a question, something you said, you used the word concern. And I don't understand, what is the concern?
Well, I mean, you all have to forgive me because I am picking this up in the middle, like many, many things, so I'm playing catch-up.
That's fine.
So with the, with the timeline, with the last extension, the last 10-year extension, so they get the 55 totals, my concern is that that's what, that was the original agreement. And I don't want to not honor that original agreement for the whole 55 years. They filled out their paperwork for their extension in a timely manner. I didn't, as I said, I do think they should pay your utilities, but I also don't want to not honor that agreement. Now, there's differing opinions about what honoring that agreement means at this...
Well, we've already changed the agreement because we made some changes in it.
That's true. There was already a change that was requested, so it's beyond the original agreement right there with that change.
But I, I get it, but if, I mean, Shane's the guy, you know, he's the lawyer, and he's saying that...
He's saying we...
I want to be clear about the provision that was changed. When I spoke to Shane about it last week, he actually said that change protects the town just as much as it protects the library, because if we just had a thing that we could evict them willy-nilly for no reason...
No one's gonna...
I know that.
Let's, let's...
Well, precisely.
I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say, hold on, I'm gonna, because two things are gonna bother me, bother me here right this second. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. One, the term that constantly gets thrown around, it's rent. It's not rent. That, that's the first thing, and I thought I made that clear before. The second thing, the eviction, there's no intent that anyone on this board wants to evict or see someone else.
So then why are you concerned about number six being changed? Because it only deals with eviction? So then why are you concerned about that?
All I'm saying was, the only thing, the only reason I'm concerned with it is, if we're, Catherine's worried about having a change into the contract that was there for 55, 55 years. They asked for that change, for their, we came up with a solution, you and Dean sat down with that. So the contract at that point, the original contract on those terms was already modified. So if I went back to Shane and...
We've never approved it, it has not been modified. Nobody's ever approved it yet. They've been without a lease for two years. No change has happened.
But hypothetically, if we approved that part of that...
All that being said, the point that they're making is that, in their opinion, by changing number six, there's a question about whether it brings that 55 years and whether it no longer needs to be honored or how, whatever words you choose. So that, that is their point. You agree or disagree, that's what they're saying.
So...
Nothing else.
No different, if they're changing, they want to change that one part of it, that's, it's no different than us trying to make an amendment to it. My, I think this is what I would say, I would request to have more time set of making a decision on it tonight, on to moving forward, to sit down and, so we can have a little more discussion or have a setting with, where I can sit down and talk to Shane on that. Knowing contracts law and being part of many contracts, there's always, if you start changing stuff, it's kind of like doing a change work order in my business. As soon as you make, you have the original contract that you have, and you make a change work order, you make a change that wants some change, and that goes two ways. And in this case, the library came to move for, for the one article of the eviction, which no one is planning on or has any intention of evicting. But that was a change, and if we would have to prove that, and they want that in there, I don't think it's hard. Look, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of constituents that don't want to come out and speak because they, they're afraid to be chastised, that our taxpayers have said to me personally, it's not unreasonable in a time where we're all tightening our belts to try and find a way to pay for stuff. It's a good faith. Is $150 going to make or break at the end of the day? No, really, it's not.
So in order to move forward here...
What my thing is, and from hearing from a lot of other residents that are afraid to come up here and say something on it, that they feel that since their bills are going up, they want, they have the feeling that there should be a good faith effort. And it's locking in, no one's going to change anything for the next 25 years, it's locked in, in stone, with blood signed to it.
So...
I, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I hesitate to kick this can down the road.
Me too.
I really, I really do. However, I wouldn't, I personally would feel better if I had a conversation with Shane.
Okay.
And I apologize for that, but I...
I understand that. I won't take it personally that you all don't think I'm telling you honestly what Shane told me, but that's...
No, 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 no. At least that is not my intention.
We can't go the other direction either.
So let me say this then.
You're just saying that that would be an acceptable way forward.
Let's try and move forward here. So there were three things in the original conversations, the number six part about the eviction was the only part that we all agreed to. We all agreed to that. I know some of you weren't here at the time, but we all agreed to that.
I could agree to that.
If I can ask Shane to move forward with typing up the lease for the final extension for us to sign, it would be ready for next month, and we can all vote on it next month.
Well, let's hold off.
Yeah.
Let's have our conversations.
Well, I, the only reason I say this is because I, I believe you're going to have these conversations and find out that what I'm telling you is precisely true.
Then we'll make the motion next month.
And then we push it another month. That's...
What's the difference? We're doing a dollar lease, I mean, it's not changing.
Any difference at this point?
It's been two years, it's not going to change one more month.
Is it gonna cost, Shane's on retainer, yes?
Well, he charges us by the hour, but I mean...
But that's our job, though.
To me, my only concern would be, you pay him to draw up the lease, and then it's possible that it's not going to be signed.
Okay.
So as long, I mean, I, given the, given the conversation, it's a possibility.
Yeah, sure.
So I don't want to, I don't...
I would also say that I did all the legwork with Shane so that I could tell you, so that we could save some money, and now you all want to have your own conversation. And it's fine, you're entitled to it, please do it.
I just want...
It's really, for me, it's just about, like I said, I'm picking it up in the middle, and while I have a lot of history, I don't have a history on this end, so I would, please, I wouldn't mind, I would appreciate that.
There was a motion on the floor. May I rescind the motion?
You just leave it.
Okay.
Just leave it hanging.
Moving on to new business. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approve the purchase of participant accident insurance from the Philadelphia Insurance Company for camp and basketball clinics, summer 2022, at a cost of $300. Is there a second?
Second.
This is the same price that it has always been, it's no increase. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. You guys got the next one?
You want to do it?
Yeah, we're deciding which one of us is going to do it. So, I make a motion, be resolved that the town board approve the following resolution, approving Highway Superintendent Martin's attendance at the 2022 Highway School in Ithaca from June 5th through June 8th, 2022, at a cost not to exceed $612. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approve Supervisor Witten's attendance at Association of Towns Finance School at the Albany Marriott Hotel, May 16th and 17th, 2022, at a cost not to exceed $500.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approve Supervisor Witten's attendance at the Perma Training at the Sagamore, May 26th and 27th, 2022, at no cost to the town.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Resolution Number 21 of 2022, reporting the standard workday and reporting resolution for certain elected officials. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so what exactly are you doing?
It's something that the town clerk manages for our new appointees, it's going to be Catherine and Michael, and they have to have their three months' time.
Did you send in my update?
We did all of yours, yes.
Okay.
So everybody's new, but they're new.
Okay.
So we did that.
We have to do it again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves moving Community Day from a recreation committee, from the recreation committee to a town-sponsored event to be held on September 3rd, 2022. Some history provided by Carol Forney on this was, in 1993, at the request of the Historical Society, the town assumed ownership and control of Clinton Community Day, with the Historical Society overseeing its operation. Earlier this year, we made it a recreation event, but now we see it would be better to administer the details as a town-sponsored event.
You need a second to your...
Oh, I need a second, sorry.
What are the, what are the issues?
Yeah, I don't...
What are the, yeah.
So, in the next one, we're gonna have a Community Day Committee, so we will have a liaison, which is, I believe, going to be me. And then if they need to spend money, do some things, you know, or raise some money, we just have administration over in the building helping them with that, that wouldn't... The Recreation Committee is kind of busy enough right now, so we thought we would...
Right, but, I mean, I understand why the Recreation Committee can't take it under, do it, because it is a huge, it's a huge event, and you have somebody who's volunteered to do it. But I, I still, I'm not sure why we're splitting these hairs. Like, it's recreation, kind of, in my mind.
It's never been, if I may, so it's never been a rec event, it's always been a town event. And the town made a motion in 1993 to approve having it be a town event, except previously it was a labor of love. So for 71 years previous, it was a combination of Historical Society, residents, town people, and then when January came and rec included that in its approved events, Dan Harkenreiter just said, you know, we will help and we'll be there, but it's one of our events that the town board approved. He just wanted to sort of memorialize that, giving it back to the town.
So it shouldn't have been on the list that it was approved, is what happened.
And then Todd came forward, and Todd had some amazing ideas and a lot of energy, and the rec committee was definitely preoccupied building a number of other programs, and so we were like, awesome, Todd, you know, you got it, so...
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
So can we just make sure that next year, that it is not on the original list, so that we don't have to redo work?
Yeah.
Awesome.
All those...
Yeah, you mean, a vote.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves establishing an ad hoc Community Day Committee to plan the event to be held on September 3rd, 2022, with a regular meeting night of the 4th, Thursday of the month, at 6:30 PM in the town hall.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is the Historical Society still involved?
If they, they can come to any of these meetings.
And they've indicated that they want to be part of it.
I know, I know people from the library showed up at the last one.
Is any, none of this is coming with a budget, however, correct?
That is correct. Todd's going to be spearheading, I believe, getting some donations.
Okay.
And, you know, if it turns out they need a couple of hundred dollars, I think we'll find it in our hearts to get that money for them.
Well, sure, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't argue. I just, it's, we're not doing that right now.
Yeah, but there is no budget at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Their next meeting, by the way, is April 28. Anybody who wants to show up here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves appointing Highway Superintendent Todd Martin as chairman of the Community Day Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I appoint myself as liaison to the Community Day Committee.
Do we get to vote on that?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Going to volunteer, but clearly, somebody wants to do it.
I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Building Inspector Mike Cessenza's attendance at the New York State Association of Fire Chiefs Annual Training in Syracuse from June 15 to June 17, 2022, with the cost shared with the Pleasant Valley Fire Department at a town of Clinton cost not to exceed $500.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we get to the confusing stuff. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Resolution Number 22 of 2022, a resolution repealing Resolution Number 18 of 2019, titled Adopting a New Medical Benefits Policy for Retired Highway Superintendents, as detailed on the attachment named Schedule A. Is there a second?
Second.
So in 2019, the town adopted a medical benefits policy for retired highway superintendents. And lately in my office, we've been reviewing the policy because we have one retired superintendent that is reaching Medicare age, and we wanted to ensure his coverage wouldn't have any gaps. In reviewing that policy with Marshall and Sterling, they had a lot of concerns about the wording of the policy. And so with their help, they edited it for us. Shane had his opinions, and we, so we clarified the policy to what we have now. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the best group retiree health insurance plan, option number one, and authorizes and powers and directs the town supervisor to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
So this relates to the previous item. We also have a retired highway employee, not a superintendent, that's reaching Medicare age, and we anticipate a couple of more retirees in the near future that will also enter into Medicare. So instead of just paying each individual ones, we got a better deal by getting a group Medicare plan. Marshall and Sterling helped us with it. It'll help offset the costs and provide consistent coverage for all of our retirees. Last week, I provided you all with as much information as I could, and I know it was a lot to absorb, so I hope you've had time to look it over. The one thing I think we should discuss.
They look very similar.
Yes.
Yeah.
Number one was the, also the recommendation of Marshall and Sterling.
Okay.
The one thing I would like to discuss is there was a, I don't see it on here, but there was a $54 a year per retiree for an annual physical and hearing coverage that is not included in this price. We can, we can approve to have that as well.
That's odd.
Yeah. But it would be $54 a year per retiree.
Hi, Carol.
Sorry, sorry.
That's all right.
Plan one with the.
Plan one would be this one, yes.
The one that's proposed. Okay.
And I also provided to you all, I think I have a copy of it here in case you didn't have it. Oh, no, I only had, made one copy. But basically, Kathy in my office made some projections for us on what this plan will save us. I'm not going to use anyone's name to protect privacy, but one retired highway superintendent, as he moves from his insurance plan right now to the Medicare, will save us approximately $17,000 a year on this plan.
Even with the best, even with us picking the best plan for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the option one, one, yes.
Right, which is, it has, provides the most coverage.
It does, it does. And then the retired employee, moving from his current healthcare plan to this, would save approximately $6,100 a year for the town. And then we anticipate a, another employee that we believe is retiring soon, that moving from his healthcare plan that we're providing right now to this would save us another $14,000 a year.
That's kind of a no brainer.
That's almost $40,000.
Yeah.
But is there a doubt, all right, so what's the, what's the drawback?
There's, I mean, there's no real drawback for the town. They're entering Medicare age, and they're required to go onto Medicare.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to give them the best coverage at the best price for all of us, because they have co-pays to pay as well.
Yeah.
The superintendents, wouldn't we pick up 100% of that? But the employees pick up, I believe it's 10%. So we're trying to pick the best coverage at the most economical prices for everybody. And yeah, they're going to lose their regular health insurance. When, we will have some CSEA discussions about this, of course, but.
So this isn't a voluntary plan. This is, they have to do this.
Well.
For the employees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. When they hit Medicare age.
Yeah, right. I understand.
I mean, I think it, honestly, I think it would save them all money. If they did it on their own and not in a group plan, you would pay more on your own. So the group gives us a better price.
Right.
And I'll, I'll be honest, I'm 47. I didn't expect to become such an expert on Medicare over the last couple of months. But I, I give Kathy Gallagher a lot of credit. She is more, much more of an expert than I am.
Can, I would like to propose that we, Carol, I don't know if this is legal, modify the resolution to include that $54 and just get it done.
To include the $54.
If we're saving that amount of money.
Yeah.
Then let's, and I can't believe that physical isn't included in this, but let's get that on there.
I agree.
Okay. So we'll include.
We'll include the $54 per year per retiree for annual physical and hearing coverage. Still about $40,000 in savings. So.
My point exactly.
Yeah. And I, and I think going forward, we're only going to have more retirees if you look at our highway group. Over the next, we have, right now, we have zero people on Medicare. We have one, one retired highway superintendent. But we're getting to a point right now where we, we're looking at about five in the next 10 years.
Okay.
So. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Last one is you guys. I make a motion, be resolved, the town board approves the April General Fund Warrant Vouchers Number.
We have a surplus item.
You have.
Oh.
Getting a surplus.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, no, I got it. I make a motion, be approved, the following resolution, be resolved, the town board approves the sale of both non-highway surplus items and the highway surplus item through absolute auction, as listed on Schedule A. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Resignations. I make a motion that the town board accepts the resignation of Richard Travis, Municipal Code Enforcement Inspector, effective March 21, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board accepts the resignation of Arthur Wyland from the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective May 1, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board accepts the resignation of Barbara Lawler as cleaner, effective May 1, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointments. We have one that's a bit of housekeeping. We have more constables right now than open positions with the county, and these guys rotate. We don't have them all working the same night, but we need to just create a couple more positions so that they all can rotate. And I make a motion that the town board approves of creating two new positions of constable, effective March 8, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
What is the connection with the county? I don't follow that.
The, we, all of our positions are approved through Dutchess County Human Resources and how many we have and.
Oh, how many?
Yeah. And we don't have enough right now for the number that we have on the payroll.
Okay.
I make a motion that the town board approves.
We have to vote.
Well, we have to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got to finish that one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves Tom Bonanno as a member of the planning board, filling the unexpired term of Cap Maxianova from April 12, 2022, until December 31, 2027. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves appointing Councilman Werner, alternate CSEA liaison, effective April 12, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
We're doing this because just in case Dean and I cannot make one of the meetings with the CSEA, we'd like to have somebody that can step in and cover for one of us. We can't have all three of us in the meeting at the same time, because that would be a quorum. So there will only be probably Dean and I at every meeting, but just in case somebody's traveling or gets sick, it's COVID time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. And then I have a new one. Carol, I make a motion that the town board approves appointing Jeffrey Newman, the Municipal Code Enforcement Inspector, effective May 9, 2022, at an annual salary of $29,120 per year. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Warrants.
Now, I make a motion, be resolved, to approve the April General Fund Warrant Vouchers Number 128 through 180, totaling $67,157.69, and the April Highway Fund Warrant Vouchers Number 66A through 95, totaling $221,971.39. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Resolution Number 23 of 2022, a motion to move funds at the April 20, or 12?
20.
20, 2022 town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I distributed the draft March 2022 Supervisor's Report to the town board. We will approve all of the reports up until this point of the year, after we get the finals from Karen, when the AUD is finished. I'm assuming it will be this month. It should be soon.
Okay.
Moving on to public discussion. Does anybody have something they'd like to say? I make a motion that we open the meeting to public discussion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Hi, my name is Carol Bancroft. I live at 955 Pumpkin Lane here in Clinton. And I'm the library director at Clinton Community Library. And in the interest of accuracy, I just would like to speak to, excuse me, a few comments about library funding that I heard this evening. One comment that I would like to dispel is that the town does not, quote, "give the library money." Another point of clarification is that the 414 does not separate the library's budget from the town's. From the New York State Department of Education, Chapter 414 laws of 1995 in New York State enables libraries of any type to put their budget up for a public vote held on Election Day to establish the municipal budget appropriation for the library. Should the vote pass, the municipality will fund the library at the approved level. There are many fine details to what exactly is covered under the Chapter 414 of New York education law. And I would like to invite any town board member who is not sure they really have a firm grasp of what it is, to come and speak with me, because I feel it's very important for the library and the town to continue to have a positive relationship. And I think that really having a solid understanding of what goes into funding a public library will help inform your decisions. Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to dispel some inaccurate information that was stated. It was stated that $150 is not much money. Well, $150 is a fraction of the cost that we spend for one summer concert. $150 is less than much, we need more money than $150 for almost any program that we offer. Books today for paperback, you're paying $19. $150 a month for the library is a significant amount of money. $1,800, if we have to pay $1,800 a year, we will need to relook at the hours that our library is open, that the programs that we are able to offer, and at the staffing that we are able to provide. We don't want us to provide less. We're being asked for more. So I want to just clear that up. Also, I wanted to say that, you know, in listening, I was originally told by one of the prior board members that $1,800 is not much, and that it will just, that the town doesn't have the money, so they need to get money somewhere. Well, in listening tonight, $1,800 is a small piece of anything you've discussed. So I don't understand that either. And we do have a great working relationship with the town. I, you know, we, last night, one of our staff members was in here helping Arlene Campbell set up for, I think it was the zoning meeting. She was having difficulty with Wi-Fi, and she was in here helping. Another one of our staff members happened to be in here as well, setting up chairs before my husband, the handyman, got here. So he, you had less to pay him, because Susan Romeyer was there putting out chairs. We, we handle some of your packages at times, and that's reciprocated on the town side. The town just, we go back and forth, helping each other out. And I think that that's a collegial relationship that we would like to continue, and to make this money thing come in the middle of it is really disheartening. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to make a motion to return to the regular order of business.